Saving money. The virtual work session in Annapolis City Council on Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty five will be called to order at five minutes past. Thank you. A few technical things there. At this time, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, who takes us from here, who stands before us, who stands before us, who gives us this.
Yes, sir. The first item is presentations, beginning with ID two twenty five, presentation on introduction of newly hired staff. Presenter, planning and zoning director, Chukuyak.
This is very exciting, Mr. Chukuyak. Please come forward with the gang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's good to be here. Chris Chukuyak, Director of Planning and Zoning. I am so happy to be here today to introduce three new hires, two of which were funded in your budget last year and have started recently, one in December and one in January. And then one position is, we filled the position in the fall of last year. So let me just start by introducing each person, and I would ask her to say a few words about what she does in our department. First, Swarupa Basu, Swarupa is a planner. She started in the fall of twenty twenty four. She builds our capacity in our development and design review division, which is the part of our office that reviews development plans and small plans like decks and additions and to major development projects like housing developments. Swarupa?
Hello, everyone. My name is Farupa Basu, and I'm a new planner for the city of Annapolis Planning and Zoning Department. I have done my master's in urban planning from university at Buffalo, New York, and I have a background in architecture. I'm originally from India, and I'm really excited to bring diverse perspectives to my work here. In my role, I'm focusing on reviewing development proposals, ensuring it complies with the zoning regulations, and contributing to the long-term planning projects. I recently relocated a few months ago and got a chance to take a tour around the city. And someone who has deep, deep, deep interest towards art and aesthetics, I really admire how the city of Annapolis has embraced its artistic heritage and maintained its historic, historic charm. And this city is truly unique in its beauty, and I'm really privileged to work here. I hope that all my skills in softwares and my knowledge in planning and architecture could bring success to the city. And I'm really excited to work with all the members in the future. And thank you for the opportunity to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can see why she stood out so highly within our candidate pool for this particular position. And she's already been instrumental in our work in looking at proactively the development potential of a number of mixed-use areas within our city and bringing AutoCAD, which is a software that the city provided to us, so Swarupa could use, to, as a tool in our, in our urban design and planning work. Next, I'm happy to introduce Alexis Robinson. She is hired as a senior planner in our community or comprehensive planning division, and she builds our capacity to handle more planning work, straight-up planning. We are a planning agency after all, but over the years, we've kind of shifted into more permitting and development review and less from the planning part. So Alexis builds our capacity in this area, which is a really important part of, of the goals that I brought to you last year about this time. So Alexis?
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to meet you all. My background, I am from Maryland. I've lived here almost my entire life. I have a master's in community development from the University of Maryland in College Park. I also have the experience of development review, site plan review, but also long-range planning from other jurisdictions in the DMV region. But my heart truly lies with community engagement and making sure that building the capacity and education of the community to be involved and informed of what is going on in their community. So I really hope to apply that passion and skills as well as some mediation certification that I have as well to improve how people, especially within the city, connect with what is being planned for the future of the city of Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alexis. And as you can see, Alexis is going to fit into our office really quickly and fine. She not only has the experience as a planner doing plans, she's a certified mediator, so she can help us in our public involvement efforts and already is already supporting Eric in our community outreach and that part of our work. So we've talked about small area plans, transit-oriented development, form-based coding and all that, form-based zoning, excuse me. That's where Alexis comes in and helps us out. Okay? And then Mojang Jahaniyan, architectural plan reviewer, she has doubled the city's capacity to review development plans because she will be our second architectural plans reviewer, supporting Ryan Bromley's efforts to work down our backlog of development applications and permits. So, Mojang?
Yes. Hi, everyone. This is Mojang. I know my name is not that easy. I am from Iran. I got my master's in architecture, and then I moved here. I started working in a company. It was a very small company, but it was an old town Alexandria, which it was a lot of historical buildings and a lot of fascinating projects that I was working for like four years. And then I moved to another company that it was mostly new construction, which was new development, new construction, all high-rise commercial buildings, which was also interesting. But then when I met Chris and the conversation I had with him, it was so fascinating. When I came to Annapolis, it was my first time coming to the city. I'm coming from Virginia. So I was, it was, I don't know, I was so, the conversation went to the road and area that we're gonna actually do with the capabilities I have in all kind of architectural technologies and softwares like Revit, AutoCAD and everything. He actually motivated me that we are going to have a big effect on the city, which is what I used to do in Alexandria. And I'm so fascinated with those kind of projects, like doing some development, make the city look better in terms of an architect. And I never thought that I'm gonna be someone part of the panel sitting in front of you guys. And I'm so, I'm appreciating this to you and also Chris at giving us this opportunity. And I hope we can help you guys to, to make the, hold the projects and everything better.
And thank you.
Amazing. Yeah, I'm gay.
Thank you. Are any of these women replacing Theresa?
No, Theresa's position is still open. We haven't hired a new replacement yet.
Any, Alderman Huntley?
Chris, when you and I were talking a little while ago, I think we were talking about a second, we were talking about doubling capacity for, I think that was building permits.
Yes.
That's distinct from this new architectural reviewer that we're, that you just introduced us to, right?
Well, the architectural plan reviewer's principal job is to review development plans and building construction plans. And that's, that's the main part of the building permits.
Got it.
So that's where the backlog happens.
Okay, great. That's wonderful.
Yeah, yep.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say welcome to the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Alderman Gay?
I have another question. I'm curious, all of you have worked in other areas. Have you noticed immediately ways that you can improve and, you know, help with our permitting process? And what other technologies, you know, maybe that we don't use that you've used in your previous roles that could help here? We're a much smaller city, obviously, than Alexandria, so I know you have some things that you could share. Thank you. Anybody?
Well, what I was, I think I had a conversation the other day with John, and I was telling him that the last company that we were using, Trello, I don't know if you've heard of it, but it's kind of a management website that all the teams and everybody's on that website based on a project. And then that's a more convenient, easy, you know, user, I don't know how to say, but it was very useful for us. So we could track each other's work and actually we could see what project in what phase, like how far we got in that project, and we could actually save a lot of time. It was helping us. But again, I'm on, now I'm working on the other side. You know, I was in the architecture frame, now I'm the other side of it, you know? I don't know if that Trello is gonna help us. It's my second week. Maybe after a couple of weeks, I can share with you guys and see if that software actually is gonna help us to speed up with our permit submissions and save time, save budget, you know what I mean? And help, help us, I don't know, to see, yeah. That's the first thing came up to my mind, yeah.
Excuse me, Mojang. Could you talk briefly about Revit and BIM or building information modeling?
So Revit, actually, I have worked in Revit for like last three, almost four years, and I was a Revit lead in my old company. So the, I love Revit only because everything is, and also Beam three sixty, because everybody can, structure, all the consultant can be actually like a cloud thing, can be online and work on a project. And at the same time, anybody is updating something, it's gonna actually, I am able to see. It's not like CAD that they need to send us back, right? So it's actually very helpful. And I loved it a lot. I know it's actually costly, but it helps not missing information. If any consultant is updating information, we are actually able to see it. We can just right away call them and be like, oh, would you mind to change this one? Because I'm seeing online that you did this change and you shouldn't. Like Revit is something that, much better than CAD, because in the other company, the whole four years I was working in AutoCAD. And when I compare them, it's actually faster, saving a lot of time. And the set that you're actually preparing, it can happen in two weeks. Like sometimes we had DD set for a big, like lot with maybe ten townhomes in two weeks for design development. So it helps a lot, my experience. But also, it depends on how fast people can be or how trained they are in Revit. So we need, how much time we need to spend to train them. But I love it, honestly, yeah.
So, so these software packages that we're talking about not only help us interact with architects and our clients and applicants, but also allow us to be more proactive in envisioning physically, real world, what a development site should look like, what the intersection of Tyler and Forest Drive could be like. We can do that in-house now. So we can sit down with architects, even take their drawings into our software, modify them right there to say, well, this is the public's vision of your project. Let's work out an arrangement. We don't have that capacity now, but we do, but we didn't until now. So that's the type of work that we imagine moving into. We have not gotten that software. We've got an AutoCAD, which is a separate product. So we have, we're, we're making our step in the right direction. We just ordered AutoCAD, and Swarupa is using that now.
Is it public facing?
No, no, this is internal, for internal use. Yes. Did you want to say anything?
Any other questions? So just for the record, how much capacity are we adding now? Because I know you came to us early on to say you need people, right? And obviously, you've hired some amazing people here. I can't believe the capacity this is gonna add. But in terms of the percentage of staff, staffing, it's considerable, right?
It's ten percent, three people. Yep.
Great. And are you, how much more staffing do you need? Sorry.
Well, you know, we're, we have a couple of positions that are not filled, one intentionally. The former chief, the chief of current planning position has not been filled because we've taken on a different structure to manage our current planning division. So right now, we want to fill the chief of, or the director or the chief of community development, and that position is being advertised. And we have a proposal that'll come to you to hire a staff person to assist in the inspections and enforcement division. We have a property management need, a property maintenance need, rather, because we promoted and shifted a person to dedicate just to hacka and those issues. So that's created a need for a person in that position. And we'll be asking for a full-time person devoted to short-term rentals. Of course, that's a position that you funded in your previous budget. So that has not been hired yet, and we're still working through the process to get that accomplished. One position to support this, this group, and it's the second phase of my plan to staff the office, is a person focused on zoning and zoning text amendments, so that we can be more responsive to the council's request to evaluate zoning requests and also get ahead of the zoning challenges. We really need to modify and modernize our zoning code. We just don't have the staffing and the time right now to do that. And so we're often chasing our tail responding to zoning text amendments rather than working with the council and planning commission in advance to modify the zoning code. That would actually help us implement the comprehensive plan, which calls for a lot of new, as you know, innovative zoning approaches, like the, the form-based code that we're working on. So that's, that position will be a new position that we're, that you had not heard about. It would be in the budget request.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Huntley?
Director Chukuyak, for that position, could you just, so I think I love the idea of improving our zoning code. Could you explain why you think that needs to be a full, sort of a recurring position rather than, boy, we really need to update our zoning code, let's hire somebody to spend a year doing that?
Yeah. So most CDs and counties have a zoning administrator, someone that administrates, that administers the code, that not only makes zoning interpretations, zoning decisions, but also is in charge of zoning enforcement. We have one person who's a zoning officer that does zoning enforcement. She's not a planner. She's, comes from the code enforcement element of the, the world. And we don't have the wherewithal to modernize our code and be responsive to the council to change it. The zoning has not been updated wholesale, probably ever. It's just been piecemeal over time. So the parts don't really work together all the time. So we just need that capacity. That work, since I've been here, has fallen onto me, and I've been doing it. But I can't do that and do the other important priorities that we have as a city. So I would say, just like the people I've introduced you to today, no one in our department now works specifically within their division. It's mostly within the division because we're kind of broke down the division line. So we all work where we need to. We're more flexible. We're developing shared understandings of the various divisions. So this person's not going to be just devoted to zoning, but be devoted to evaluating development proposals against the zoning code as well. Sitting with developers and negotiating changes to their projects because they have the experience and expertise in zoning. So it's, it's across-the-board staffing, but that is the area of emphasis for this proposed position.
Alderman Gay?
Just quickly, how much of your staff is working remote still?
A handful. I would say probably, well, more than a handful. I'd probably say fifty percent work remote one day a week. Several, several employees work remotely two days a week, but no more than two days a week.
I know that was an issue that some of the constituency had of just communication in general. And I know a lot of people are working from home, so.
Yeah. But anybody that works from home is available by phone, and the, the folks that need to be in the inspections and permitting world are completely connected to our system at home. They have capabilities like they would in the office. So.
Well, you guys look amazing. Nice to have some more accents in the town. Thanks for the international perspective you're gonna bring us. I'm sure it's gonna make this city even better. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is ID three twenty five, presentation on council members' budget priorities to be incorporated into the mayor's budget as appropriation. Presenter, city council members requested by Alderman Huntley.
You want to go to the table with them? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't need to. I think, I think we were gonna start with our acting city manager had a few words to say, and then our budget manager has a brief presentation for us that we can start sharing our priorities.
Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate this opportunity to, to sit down with you. I don't remember doing this last year. I think this is a bit of a new thing. Obviously, when we put together the budget, part of what you guys expect of us is to come to the table with an understanding of what the general needs are of the city. In light of, I like the analogy that, that Mike Malinoff uses of you guys writing the music and the city being the conductor in the orchestra to play that music. And so we're, you know, come to the table with some professional judgment about what it takes to play that music. But as we go into the planning process, having a sense of what music you are interested in is helpful. Obviously, there's always a bit of a balancing act. Jake has a bunch of, has, has some context setting to do for you. But I'm really happy that we are deciding to do this this year so that we get to hear, as we go into our planning, what are the things that are in your head that can help us inform what we're looking at?
Thank you, Vicki. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. For the record, I am Jake Trudeau, Budget Manager. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce my team. So if they could stand, please. Suzanne Flaherty, our grants accountant, Capri Turner, our budget analyst, and Darren Johnson, our senior budget analyst. As you all know, these folks are gonna spend a considerable amount of time in the next couple of months building the FY twenty-six budget. It is not just me. These folks are a great asset to the city, and I am proud to have them on my team. Thank you. All right. So let's jump into twenty five. So recent fiscal years have provided the city with an annual surplus to fund balance. We do not expect that trend to continue into twenty five. Currently, we, we project that the one-time reserve available at the end of twenty five will be four point three nine million, capital reserve to be five point eight one million. And just as a reminder, ARPA funds are fully committed at the, at the end of December of last twenty-four. And just as a reminder, ARPA funds are fully committed at the, at the end of December of last, '24.
I'm sorry, Mr. Trudeau, do we have this on?
Yes, ma'am, I sent it last night. Should be, check your email. Email. Considerations for '26. We believe that the theme this year is to preserve. We should focus on the preservation of our essential services. At this moment, we're facing a few variables that may challenge us to, in balancing the budget for '26. For example, how does the current financial situation at the state impact the city? We receive a, a surplus of, of state funds in the form of grants, whether that be operating or capital in nature. The transportation fund, we're anticipating a deficit in that fund in '26. Grant funding remains flat, and expenses continue to increase. You all know that the parking fund subsidizes the transportation fund. FY '24 was a great year for the parking fund. We added to fund balance as our waterfall payment included amounts from reserve accounts that were set aside at the time of the bond sale. FY '25 is showing more of a normal trend that we anticipate for future years. If the parking fund doesn't have enough to fully subsidize the transportation fund, we need to find another funding source, and that could be the general fund. City Doc, the closure, the, the timing of the closure will impact dock charges, the boat show, and tourism. The downward fluctuation of interest rates. We are, we've already seen this trend. Interest rates on cash reserves will continue to decrease. We all know there's a highly competitive job market. This is causing regular vacancies and challenges departmental bandwidth. And of course, annual inflation that puts pressure on non-personnel expenses. Lastly, the budget timeline for this year. You all know that I love to highlight that amendment due date. But on a serious note, I highly encourage you all, as soon as, you know, you receive the mayor's proposed budget, please to start, please start those discussions of amendments at that time. This is going to put us in a better position to be able to roll out your ideas on July 1st. And that concludes, thank you very much.
I'm going to start, sorry, with Alderman Huntley because you, you had an agenda here or something like that, or?
Yeah, just to some extent. But I think if folks want, have questions for our budget manager, for our acting city manager, that's, those would be great. And then we'll jump into having folks go around and share their priorities.
Okay, Alderman Gay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. My first question is related to the ARPA funding. You mentioned that, are we able to have figures? And you mentioned that it was already reserved on projects. What projects?
I, I could provide a breakdown. If you remember last year, there was 2 million in fleet, 1.5 of that to the fire boat. We've committed a little over, and I can get you exact, a little over two.
So there was 2 million, and we gave 1.5 million to the fire department?
For the fire boat. No, no, no. ARPA total is, is, with interest, it's over 7 million.
Oh, okay, okay.
2 million of that would be, 1.5 the fire boat and another 500,000 to fleet. There's also, we, we programmed 1.96 million to cover the transportation deficit in, in '25. We also contributed a significant, significant amount of money to the office place, office space planning capital project. And then there was about 700,000 committed in '24 for other persons' programmatic expenses. And I think that's about it. I can, I will send you a definite list, though.
I would appreciate that. I'm curious on the other programmatic expenses, $700,000.
Yeah, so that was via an amendment process in '24.
And where, what were the programs?
So I, I can look that up and provide, it is in the budget book. But again, I can send you a definitive list.
And just lastly, so we can amend our ARPA funding? And we just, you would obviously just have to find the funding to cover the other.
So, so the ARPA funding is been spent or committed, and it had to have been spent or committed by December 31st. So there are a couple of purchase orders encumbered regarding ARPA funds, but everything has been spent or committed. We cannot change the purposes at this time. And we'll do a report out to the federal government in April to show what we've done this year. And the only thing that will be open at that time is any purchase orders that haven't been fully paid out. So we can't, we have no more ARPA to use. We have committed it to the things that the council approved in the budget.
I would love to see that, thank you.
Yep.
I was never satisfied that most of our ARPA money went to other things. When you look around the country, people were starting massive social programs, universal basic income, rent subsidy programs, all of those things because it was obviously at the height of COVID. My second question is as it relates to grant money. You've just mentioned, you know, grant revenue just remains flat. In the budget last year, we added a position for grant administrator?
So the grants administrator position that's in DPW, we added a few years ago. We transferred it over to DPW last year. That position is focused on capital grants. When I was mentioning in my presentation that grants have remained flat, that was specifically for the transportation fund. Transportation grants have remained flat.
What about grant revenue in general across the city? You know, obviously, you've just laid out that there are, you know, significant deficits that may have to be paid from the general fund, et cetera. And so if we're using that, then we're taking away from, from other things that the funds could be going to. And that's my biggest pet peeve every year. It's like, why don't we have somebody writing grants in any department or under the city manager? Or, like, I know police had Rhonda McCoy for a while working on that. What's, what's the difficulty, difficulty there? And if we have to budget the positions, why don't we do that? I, I don't understand why it was sent to DPW.
Do you mind if I jump in on that? Well, actually, maybe our acting city manager can answer better than I can.
So the, the issue from my perspective, so the city actually has been quite aggressive about, about going after grants and has secured a lot of grants. Part of the issue is not, from my perspective, the, the risk to the city is not so much in the getting of the grants. It was in the tracking and compliance with the grants. And we have a lot of grant funds. And we have a lot of federal grants that the city has gotten. And those come with requirements and strings that you are expected to track. And so that was why that position that had, had previously been authorized essentially got shared with DPW. Because we don't want to, we don't want those funds that the city has already been awarded to be in jeopardy. So it's, it's not so much that the getting of the grants is the issue. It's the, it's the management afterward.
So answer to my question, will, in the mayor's proposed budget, which you all have been a part of, will there be a request to add positions to, for grant administration or grant compliance and tracking?
I, so part of the, those decisions are ahead of us. That's partly why we're having this, this meeting today. So what I will do is, in that list of, here are the things I'm interested in seeing, that's one of the things that I will be writing down with you with your name attached to it, is an interest in how we're addressing and looking at the grants picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Pindell Charles. Then Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one comment. I guess we all got an email from State Senator Henson yesterday about all the grant, oh, what the governor has in store for us in our particular area. So what's in the governor's budget and what the projects are. So I found that fascinating.
I would love if you could share that with me.
Oh, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Do you want us to jump into some of our priorities now?
Do you have something to ask them?
I think we were going to have any questions. Yeah, questions first, questions. Alderman Arnett has a question.
Alderman, do you after Alderman Savage? Have you, have you got a question at all, Alderman Savage?
Just questions for staff?
Yeah.
All right, so.
You're next, Alderman Arnett, sorry.
Thank you.
So, so yeah, so that 4.3 million, that's the one-time use? You have it listed as one-time?
Yes, sir.
Reserve money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and if I could offer a couple of process, or suggestions, I think it'd be helpful to have, I know it's difficult to keep track of all of our amendments. It's a huge spreadsheet. But if, I'd like to have some better way to keep track of that also after the fact. Because when I've gone over the past few months to look that up, it's been difficult for me to find. So maybe if there's a better place we could store it. And I also didn't quite see it in the Legisdar, associated with the budget legislation. I, I couldn't find it that way. Maybe I was just missing it, but I think something a bit easier. Because part of my intention is so we can go back and verify. But also, the other part of my, my comment is just to have like a way to track, like implementation of some of the amendments. Just so we can, again, keep track of what have we, what have we actually, what did we actually get passed? Where is it with funding? Because some of the one-time use in particular, I know if it doesn't get spent, then it goes back to general fund. And so I think it's helpful for us to keep track of those things to know if we need to reintroduce the amendment or whatnot. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And just, so I'll, I'll talk about some process improvements that, I hear you. Some process improvements we made on our end. There's, in the budget books, there's always a one-time tracker in the adopted budget book. Around page, I'll say 16, it lists out all of our planned uses for this current fiscal year. So that includes everything that you all voted on as an amendment as well. We've made it a point, Capri actually had a great idea to pull this, all these amendments out, as many as we can that make sense, to put them in a particular account within the department. So the only thing that hits that account is our would-be amendments. So the, the other thing, too, I think a lot of your frustration is that you guys have these ideas, but it takes a while to get them fully implemented. And that was my comment of like, as soon as you guys think of these ideas, let's get people involved. So July 1st, we can hit the ground running, right?
Yeah.
And if we can start that process sooner, it makes, it allows, you know, departments to buy into it. We can form, we can really flesh it out programmatically so we don't have to take those first couple of months to build that program, right? And I can also better create the amendment itself. So I'm, I'm all ears on how to make that process better.
Great.
Absolutely.
And I think a way to, and maybe that'll work in with what you're already thinking, but for us to get a, a better idea of, because frankly, sometimes when we, when we pass these amendments, we don't know if it's exactly what it's going to take to get implemented, right? Or how much time. And so I think if there is a way for us to, to see, oh, yes, that estimates this is going to take, you know, three months, six months, eight months to, to staff up or to put it out to RFP, you know, whatever it is, I don't entirely, you know, whatever it is that we end up proposing. But it'd be good to keep track because then we're at least aware of, okay, here they are. We don't have to keep asking or feel like we're, we're, we're being ignored when that's, may not be the reality, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I really like the theme for fiscal '26. The theme to preserve, I would add, and protect. And I'll tell you why I would add that. I'm looking at page two with the predicted one-time reserve. And if my memory is correct, in fiscal '24, that one-time reserve was around 6 million. And in fiscal '23, it was around 7 million. I have always been uncomfortable about how we handled that one-time-only reserve. And when we get to my question about transportation, I'll remind you that I thought we should set aside some money in last year's budget to head off the anticipated shortfall. But my first question is, I like the questions that are raised on page three, but I'm wondering, what are the answers? Do we have any ideas at this point? It sounds to me like there's going to be some real belt tightening at the state level. And I suspect we have little idea what's going to happen at the federal level. Do we have any supposition about how much money's coming from those sources is going to fall?
So if I, if I may, I'll comment on your, your first comment that you made about the one-time reserve. And I, I think you hit one of the nails on the head there. We would, every year that we would bring the budget to you, that balance would be 8 million, 9 million. And we substantially hit it pretty hard in fiscal year '25 with the, with the planned uses. Now, what, the, the other point of that, too, is we don't expect to add to that at the end of '25, like we do every year. So 4.3. Exactly, and we have up to now. So 4.3 million, you know, again, we're not expecting to add any more money to that at the end of '25. And to answer your question about the current situation at the state, we don't have those answers yet. You know, we are very much in the beginning stages of building the budget. At, we just had departments submit their budget requests. The next stage for us is to really massage and look at our revenue numbers for '26. There's some, there's some variables that we're working with, with the state on that as well, outside of grants. And then, you know, we're waiting to, waiting, it's a waiting game for us, just like, just like with you all. You know, what's really going to happen there and how is it going to impact us? Is there anything you want to add, Julie?
I would say that as, at this point, we haven't been informed from the state that anything is coming our way as far as reducing or holding back funds. However, they're just starting their budget process as well. So we don't know what's coming out of this session. And we'll know more as we work through the budget and build the budget for '26. We'll know more if we see that impact anywhere. On the grants side, there's not a lot that could happen on the operating side. The, the revenues are, are formula-based typically, so we wouldn't anticipate that. But in the past, they have held back some of those resources to cover shortfalls. It was long ago, but there were some that were subjected to holds at the state until they knew how their budget was going to turn out. So, and, and I just wanted to assure you all on the one-time funds, we are tracking that. Every year when I do the financial statements, I have to say how much is left in that reserve. And if a program did not go forward, it's added back to the balance. We don't just put it back in the general fund balance. We hold it, put it back in the one-time reserve, and add that back. So that process is taking place. It's just to show it to you, it's probably got to be cleaned up a little bit and put it in a more presentable format.
Thank you. So on these very good questions on page three, the next one, is the shortfall, possible shortfall for transportation? Last year, I remember that was running about 2, 2.5 million dollars. Is it still that big? Or what is your sense of the size of that potential shortfall?
To be completely honest, I think at this point in time, it's too early for us to tell. We haven't, we have not been able to, to look at where expenses are coming in that, that the department has asked for. The only thing that I can tell you that I am certain of as of today is that the grant funding has remained flat. So.
Well, that, good. I'm, I'm going to get to that in a minute. On, on the city doc closure, again, I think that's uncertain. And now we have the uncertainty of the judicial review case in a, in a nasty way. That could be a blessing. If we can't close the city doc, we'll continue to get revenue from it. But it's not the way we want to get that. I'm going to make a pitch now on two things. One, I've never been a big fan of grant funding. I've always felt that it allowed the city to live beyond its means. This may be the time finally when that, the grant funding is going to fall short, given uncertainties with the state budget and uncertainties at the federal level. But certainly, a lot of saber rattling at the federal level about cutting back on spending. Excuse me. One of the things I'm going to make a pitch for right now, and the legislation is working, is the spending affordability legislation that I have going, which I really feel, and I'm going to. I'm going to be pitching it to my colleagues on the council, having those five different consortia of forecasters and out, five years out forecasts, I think is going to help us think a lot more about what the future looks like and help us when we think about decisions we're going to be making on fiscal 26. I got comments from the finance director and from the Financial Advisory Commission, and I'm going to be working on those, but get that legislation into the hopper. There are outside resources and they're actually pretty good. They're used by the state and the county. And it seems to me long overdue that we take advantage of those as well. So anyway, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Neil.
Thank you very much. Two quick questions, well, one point. When I first came onto the council in preparation for the FY '23 budget, we did have one of these and it was super helpful because it kind of had us all talking about what priorities we were going to focus on. Last year, you introduced the Google form, which was really, really helpful. And I know that we made some suggested changes. Is that something that you're planning on?
For council requests?
For council requests, correct, yes.
Yeah, so we, we did it in the past for amendment, like amendment submission. Yeah, we can, we can, so right now we have Google forms that departments use and in hopes that, you know, they would have, you guys would have, you know, connected and like send it in. But if you have things now, are you saying things now or are you saying, go ahead?
So for amendments.
Yeah, absolutely for amendments.
You had created the two, I think Capri created.
Yes.
The two Google forms. It was really helpful.
Yes.
We kind of were introduced to them in the middle of the budget hearings versus next week.
I'm with you, yes. They're ready to go. We want to take another look to see if there's any improvements that we can make, especially given Alderman Savage's feedback today. But yes, they will be available to you a lot sooner than they were in the past.
And I think it will be helpful because those are Google documents that could be live. I know that in the past, we kind of, that May 9th date comes up and then we're kind of all scrambling and realizing that, you know, Rob and I might be working on a very similar piece or, you know, whatnot. Having those, I think will be helpful moving forward to be better connected and possibly reduce, maybe we go from 50 amendments to 20 because we're able to discuss and collaborate on amendment that would be not necessarily my amendment, but maybe a group amendment.
And I would, I would need your permission, each person's permission to share whatever the other alterperson has come up with, but.
I think that that should be a given. I can't imagine that you'd have a secret amendment that, to want.
Yes, we have had those.
That's not helpful to anybody.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I was imagining is that we all kind of go one by one and each share these top three priorities I asked you guys to all put together. And my idea with this is that if we can each kind of, to the point Karma was just making about trying to overlap and do that in a smart way rather than a not smart way, is that if we can each go around, share those priorities, I'm going to write them all down. I'm sure our assistants, our acting city manager, our budget staffer all can be writing them down. And my hope is if we can each take, let's say, three minutes to share those priorities, then we can hopefully have a good half hour to kind of go back and forth about them and ideally then spend our last 15 minutes trying to crystallize them into some sort of, here's the ones that we all really agree, or at least five or six of us all really agree, we definitely want to see put in. And then those are things that, for the mayor's sake, he'll know, okay, this is something that should probably go into the budget because even if it doesn't, it's going to end up being an amendment that passes. So that's how I'm imagining this process going. And if he's still on Zoom, I'd suggest we start with Alderman Arnett and then we can kind of work our way around to the, more or less the finance committee finishing it up.
Sure. Can Alderman Gay is going to whisper his to Jake? Yes.
So I just went back to find the, actually, thank you so much. I have the floor, Alderman. The mayor's recognized me. The only thing that I can find as it relates to the ARPA is from April the 8th, 2024. You said there was $7 million or 7.9 million. The, you all sent out a memo that says, "The budget calls for using 3.5 million. That remains out of the original 6.6 million of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is in preparation for the mayor's fiscal year 2025 spending plan." So I, I just really want clarity, if there was only 3.5 million originally set aside with, with, for projects or whatever, how was the other 3.5 million? Was it allocated through amendments or was it sent to us in the budget at some point?
So the reason that it, so 7 million is because it increases interest. So it's going to grow, the balance is going to grow until we spend the funds. And then if that memo was sent out in April, it sounds like it was prior to us sending out the proposed budget for '25, which means that we have added, we have found other things that we wanted to spend those funds on.
Did you used to have a live link though, that the general public could track the ARPA funds?
So, no, but I want to tell you that the original amount of ARPA funding that we received in cash was in the $6 million range. Over time, it's accrued interest and during a time of high interest rates. So we put that money in there and overall, we've had some $7 million to use. And that 3.5 million that we would have given you back in April would have also been reduced by things that we've already used it for. We used some of the ARPA funds for transportation in the last, one of the years might have been, and I'm going to, '22 and '24, we had to use ARPA funds to help transportation. So we've used it over time and brought it down a bit. So what we were going into our fiscal year '25 budget with was that reduced amount, the 3.5 million, and we were trying to find purposes for the rest of it so we could ensure that we used it by the December deadline.
And was that memo, I don't recall ever at any point, it was something, somebody saying, "We have to use the ARPA funding by December 31st."
It is a federal requirement. It was from the very beginning, they wanted it all committed by December of '24.
And you sent that, who sent that?
The federal government.
No, who's, okay, well.
Well, as we went in, well, during the budget, during the budget process last year, we talked about it as we were trying to make sure that we had allocated all the ARPA funds, that we had to have everything committed or spent or committed in the form of a solid purchase order with a vendor by the end of December.
And all that was voted on?
I just can't find any communication. I mean, I can't see where's, where's that.
I think we're on to Alderman Arnett, right?
I guess it's still questions, Alderman Finlayson.
Yeah, I do have a question. May I?
Yeah, Alderman Finlayson.
First of all, let me apologize. I have a little crisis going on in Milwaukee. My dad's okay, but it's a crisis nevertheless, so I had to take that call. My question is about transportation. It's usually my question, one of my questions. Can you tell us what the shortfall in transportation has been for the last two or three years? And I ask the question because I would like for us to plan on that shortfall. But we can't do that unless we have some general idea of what it might be. You know, we know what we're getting from, what is it, ARMP? I always get that acronym wrong. Okay, but we know what we're getting and I assume that amount is still about the same. So can we see what that's going to look like so that we can, like I said, so we can plan on it?
Yes, because that's, that's a great suggestion because over the past two fiscal years, we've used COVID, the CARES Act money, we used ARPA monies, and we've got money coming in from parking. So that would help us project what we've had to provide for transportation operations and then show a trend into '26 so that we know where we might end up in '26. But as Jake indicated, we don't yet know what the parking costs are going to be because SP Plus has to give us their cost for next year. So we know how much parking fund is going to have to give to transportation. We don't yet know the cost of the transportation fund because we haven't accumulated that. But we could give a history of the transportation fund and what has been supported by these grant funds that we've had access to that no longer exist. We can do that.
Do we get reports from the parking agencies with their accurate or to-date or, you know, their revenue?
We, I mean, can we? We get the receipt, we get reports with the receipt that document what it's for. It's not formulated and presented formally in any way. But as we get the funds in from both SP Plus and from the waterfall payment, we get a report of what the source of those funds were.
Just trying to find a way to be able to come up with the, a guesstimate, I hate to use that term.
No, no, that's, that's, that's fair.
Okay. I think that was it for now. I did have another question, but it escaped me. Transportation is important.
Alderman Pindel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on what Alderman Finlayson just said, give you an example, we discarded the purple and the orange routes with transportation this year. Now is, and we go to the, now we have to go. Is that all included in looking at the anticipated deficit? Was, I don't know what went into that decision. I'm assuming it was ridership. So do we look at ridership also in determining where the deficits are? Does that make sense? Is that something we should do more of or?
The ongoing operational cost of transportation for whatever routes they're doing are being managed by the transportation staff. And as they present their '26 budget ask, they will have adjusted their costs accordingly to reflect the services that they plan to provide in '26. So yes, they would have taken off the cost of those routes, maybe reallocated them. I know they're trying to do some of those on-demand services. Maybe that pilot program will go further. I'm, I don't know yet what they have anticipated because we're just opening up and looking at their budget plans for '26. But that will be a factor.
Based on the information that we received, that transition has gone extremely well. So that might be helpful in, in responding to an anticipated deficit.
And transportation has always been subsidized by grants, right? It looks like there's trouble on a state level. So the grants haven't been withdrawn, but they're flat, right? But of course, everybody's costs have gone up and ridership is down, but that's not really the revenue that we count on that much, right? Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Our interviews that we're laying out today, are you going to then evaluate them and decide what is going to come into your budget or, or have you all discussed?
I mean, I think the, everybody wants to hear from us on what we want. I mean, you know, you know, the budget team, I don't micromanage the budget. We know what we're, what we're dealing with this year. And then, you know, I, I kind of look at it as you guys look at it, you know, so. But this is good exercise for us. I mean, we did it last year. We generally do it to find out what your priorities are. I think we've had some extra money over the years. It's been nice to be able to do some of the things that we've been able to do with that money and we, we put it to good use. But that might not be as easy now. Thank you. Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have three items as Alderman Huntley asked for. The first one, hopefully, we will get through the short-term legalities and start doing the resiliency on city dock. I know we have had some planning and some measures looking at elsewhere in the city, but, and I have listened to the budget, the finance director and the budget director, and it may not be a lot of money left. But I do think we should start thinking about pre-funding other resiliency efforts in the city. I don't think we have necessarily a 3P opportunity to help us with that. So it's inevitably, I think, going to be a heavy lift. So I definitely want to put that on the table for consideration. I mentioned a few minutes ago, the spending affordability model. That's not a very big ticket item and it is something where I think we can fairly easily piggyback on to the state or the county thing, but the county contracts. But I think it'll help us, they do look at the very questions we're asking about what we think is going to happen with the state budget, county budget, the federal budget. It's five different economic groups and they put together a consensus, a look and forecast. I also think that having that information will be helpful when we go into, soon we're going to be re-entering union negotiations. And I think that's data that we can share with the unions so together we can look at what the income prospects are. And then my last one is more of a capital budget again, which is, has to do with sidewalks. We, we have a lot of places in Ward Lake that just don't have sidewalks. Fortunately, we're starting to have more and more younger families and they're walking their kids out in the street. And I think that's a very unsafe life safety issue. I also, with this effort, I noticed that the, those people who got out and diligently cleaned their sidewalks early, they were very clear, much clearer than the streets. But as someone who is advancing in years, it would really be helpful if the city had some equipment that could be used by neighborhoods to clean the sidewalks so that we would really have that, those sidewalks much more passable and people aren't out in the street. And I would throw in a pitch for some of the wards, particularly I think Ward 2, but others, we might want to think about doing the same thing, clearing leaves. Those are sort of human-level, day-to-day nuisance things that I think our constituents would really appreciate us giving them some more support. So those are my three things.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my three areas, which I'm going to try to go through quickly here in my three minutes. Priority area one would be council support. Priority two would be pedestrian safety and mobility. And third is.
What was number one again?
Council support is the first priority area. Second's pedestrian safety and mobility and then environmental. And so under council support, I, you know, I think, I tried to do this last year, I think lost by a vote, but I think I might make the case again. I do think it'd be helpful to the council to have two additional support staff, one, perhaps one for each side or something along those lines to help support us in some of our.
One for the left and one for the right.
To help support with, and to help support other council staff as far as constituent services, responses, keeping track of things, research, et cetera, et cetera. And so for the second area, pedestrian safety and mobility, I've got, so I still want to, I hope we prioritize cycling and pedestrian route expansion. I know the mayor's a strong supporter of that. So along those lines, some legislation I'll probably, hopefully be introducing soon with some others, would adopt a complete street standard, which the county has already done, the state has just done it. And now that means when we go into improved streets, do any work on the streets, we have to look at pedestrian cycle, trees, everything. That, that will likely increase costs, but in my mind, I think it's worth it. A lot of the issues we've been dealing with lately have dealt with death and injuries on our. on our streets. So that's something I'd like to have a dialogue about. And again, that may impact some of our funds that we allocate for, instead of just thinking of it as road safety, I think we should, or road improvements, I think we should think of it as pedestrian improvements to broaden it. So another part of that would be looking at, along these lines, I want to add a CIP to install a sidewalk on Benda Beach Road and make, do complete streets on Benda Beach Deployable bollards downtown for pedestrian safety. And I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about this, so sorry if I'm stepping on your toes, Alderman Huntley, but with what's happened in New Orleans, I think we should look at that. Snow removal, as Alderman Arnett mentioned, on priority bike paths, school routes. Think we should look at what we can do to actually take on some of that clearing. I'd like to look into hiring Dodge Cycling Embassy to help us with making the case for Bikonomics downtown so we can move toward, get the businesses on board and educated with how pedestrian economy helps improve our economy. Look at possibly getting some one-time use money to add some more, to put a little bike garage in the parking garage, like maybe take a couple spots and I think that'd be cool. And also get some money for, I got money last year to look at some mini micro traffic circles to study, to see they're feasible. And so I'd like to follow that up with possibly some money towards actually installing them. Environmentally, I have, again, a priority for me would be, and I hope to introduce legislation soon on this, but electric vehicle transition, which I know is going to drive up vehicle costs and potentially push back some of the replacement cycle. But I really think it's, as we're trying to protect against climate change downtown and sea level rise, I really think we need to prioritize transitioning to clean transportation.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Savage, you mean transitioning the city's fleet?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Phase one. And I also want to look at our water fountains around town, see if we can improve those.
The what again? I'm sorry.
Water fountains. I know the ones in, I think in Back Creek Park, I believe, needs some improvement. And I've had somebody suggest down on the new city dock, I don't know if we're putting a water fountain down there. Leaf blower, transition assistance. I'd like, hopefully, if that program works well, we can get that funded for next fiscal year if the council agrees. And lastly, with the law office who just left, I think they are going to be working on identifying how much money is needed to make sure we get all of our conservation and conservation easements and other easements, like water access easements, properly recorded. I think that's, I'm not sure if it's coming out of law office yet or planning and zoning. I think he said they were going to look at that, but that is something that we'd like to look at. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gay?
Capital Improvement Project follow-up is my priority. We've budgeted.
I'm sorry, I said it again.
Capital Improvement Project follow-up. I've budgeted so many things for Ward Six. Hilltop, the sidewalk alongside Alderman Savage, the bike lanes that we were supposed to do on Tyler Avenue. Nothing's come to fruition. So I'd like to follow up on that. The rest of my amendments will be focused on assisting the most vulnerable citizens in our communities.
Well, what again?
Assisting the most vulnerable citizens in our communities. Thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Huntley?
I have Alderman Channell Myers. Priority, she's something to me ahead of time. His three were continuing childcare assistance, finding intersections to implement roundabouts, I think in line with what Alderman Savage said. And also additional pedestrian safety and traffic calming, similar to what's gone in on Hilltop, but he's particularly interested in seeing if those can go into Spa and Bay Ridge.
Thank you. And Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to bundle them like Alderman Savage did. Probably not as well. The first is filling the void in Transportation so that we do not have to, and I think it's obvious, so that we do not have to cut service. So planning on that shortfall. The second is seed money for workforce housing program. A number of years ago, probably 15 or so, we developed a plan with a local bank, Caldwell Banker, to provide assistance in helping our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers, our nurses to get into homeownership, which we know is how one develops wealth. And so we were never able to get the seed money, which was simply a couple hundred thousand dollars, to begin that program. I would like for us to create a program for city residents to help them with homeownership, workforce housing. It's not low-income housing, it's not high-income. It's for the average citizen. An employee, a new hire, who would, one, track all legislation, and, two, follow up to make sure that whomever is responsible for that legislation follows through with that legislation. We tend, as a council, to prove a lot of things. And then we ask months, years later, well, didn't we do that? But it was never fulfilled because there was no one tracking. So someone who's dedicated to tracking our legislation, who it impacts, you know, those staffing impact statements are significant because that tells us who's responsible and what it takes for them to do the job. So I think having a dedicated person, it doesn't have to be totally dedicated, but having a person assigned to do that would be significant for all of us. Community nonprofit grants, I'd like to see us increasing those with some caveats that we are able to track the success of the programs. And I know that can get pretty sticky, but we can figure it out. I'd be remiss if I didn't say we need to take care of our employees. I know that that's a bargaining, subject of bargaining, and we can't breach that. But there should be some consideration that employees are to be maintained, just like we maintain everything else. And lastly, we need a sidewalk snow removal plan. Years ago, we decided we were taking over all the sidewalks, and we charged all of our residents $25. And they willingly paid us $25 because $25 and they don't have to do their sidewalks. And the state came along and said, mm-mm, that's tantamount to a tax, and you cannot do that. So we had to refund that money. So we don't have a plan. We know that the code says residents have to clean their sidewalks, but if you look around the city, most people don't realize they have to do that. So we need a plan. We need to advertise it, and we need to help residents understand that they need to clean their sidewalks. And it's just, not just for children, but it's for everybody. And I think that's my list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Pindel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the lists are getting longer and longer. I feel better for waiting out.
Harry said three things.
Well, we're going beyond three. But anyway, at least in my ward, we're developing some stormwater and drainage projects, especially in the South Southwood area and the parole Heights area. And combine that with Annapolis Design District because I have a lot of impervious surface along with a tree canopy component to that. I'm going to make that number one. I've been speaking with planning and zoning about possibly an entrepreneurial and economic development plan for the city. It's in its infancy stages. I'm looking at parole place, and that's already in the hopper. Western Shopping Center where the Walgreens is, has ceased for some period of time right now due to the, I can't remember, a federal, federal decision based on, and I can't recall, I'll think of the name later, some federal decision that has kind of thwarted that for now. Alderman O'Neil and I are still working on the WNAV property project. And I'm, along with everybody else, when it comes to the sidewalks as well. One thing in particular that I want to mention, and I know we've all been watching and listening to the news and what's going on in New Orleans and California, and we need to really do a deep dive and a deep assessment as to how prepared we are for any kind of catastrophe. I don't know what that's going to look like, but we can talk about all these wonderful things we want to do. But when you look at California and how it was so beautiful, the Palisades area, and now everything is so gray. I mean, we really need to kind of step back and take a look at, are we prepared for fire? Are we prepared for a shooter? So that's something that we really, really need to do a deep dive on and assessment. And I don't know if our public safety team, I know our Office of Emergency Management cannot handle this kind of assessment. They just don't have the staff. And police and fire are also part of all this decision-making. But do we need a person, a contractual person, to come in and do a deep-dive assessment of what we need? Do we have what we need? Are we there? Do we need to look at some really serious things that may not be very costly, but some things that we need to do? So I put that on the radar for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Neil?
All right. I too have sidewalks on mine, but I'm going to go one step further from snow removal. One of the biggest complaints I got this summer was weeds in sidewalks. So I want a program that's taking care of sidewalks in winter and summer. I talked over the summer with Bumper because he's got the Eastport Clean Streets. I'd like to see that program come to the whole city, somehow get it there. And I think that it could be incorporated winter and summer.
We need seven more bumpers. That's what we need.
Yeah. Kevin Simmons has continued to tell me there's a, there's a book, and I think that it's called The Broken Glass Syndrome. And I was trying to get him to. Theory. Thank you. Not syndrome. Theory. That talks about, you might live in a beautiful neighborhood, but if you look around and see weeds and broken glass. Broken windows. Windows. You're not, you don't have the respect and the wherewithal to continue to make that space better. So I think that that's one thing I really want to work on. Kind of in conjunction with that is economic development. And many years ago, I don't know exactly how many, we actually got rid of our Economic Development Department, if we ever truly had one, and went with, I believe, a manager. But we need to look. When I travel, when other people travel, you see there have robust downtown, you know, businesses going on, and it's not every other storefront or restaurant. You can only eat once when you're traveling downtown. And we need places where both locals and tourists. When I first moved to Annapolis, there was a Gap where Zachary Sturges is, clothing store. There was a Britches. There was a place I could go when I first moved in and didn't have a car. I could go and I could buy housewares. I could buy pots and pans at Stevens Hardware. There's not that downtown unless you want to have a high-end cookware from, you know, one of the kitchen stores or whatnot. So really focusing on economic development, who do we want to bring here? I hear all the time, you know, Vineyard Vines is in all these places. They won't come here because they've done their cost analysis. So we really need to talk with our local landlords and come up with a plan to really fill downtown with, not necessarily another t-shirt shop, but good quality draws for everybody, whether it's clothing or housewares or whatever. And then my third one really falls in and it aligns a lot with what Chris Jacobiak is doing in planning and zoning, and that is really enhancing the customer service aspect of our city. Everything from, you know, how people are treated, how many times they have to call the city. And I understand that we do have some frequent flyers that are called all the time. But I hear all the time, you know, people are so frustrated and they're like, we can't, we can't figure out the process. We can't figure out this. So really adding to our customer service. And that's probably more than three minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing I did remember. The antitrust, there's been an antitrust suit filed in reference, I think, to what that development is going to be at Route Two and West Street. And that's why it was supposed to be, I think, a Wegmans or Harris Tito coming, but it has kind of thwarted that project. So antitrust was the word I was trying to think of. Thank you.
Alderman Huntley?
Wonderful. Gosh, I feel like you guys have given me a lot of things that I wish I added. But I, kind of similar to how Alderman Savage did, I had three big categories, and then I've got some smaller things within them, almost all of which align in one way or another with something somebody else has said here. The top-line one for me really aligns well with this theme of preserve. And I've been saying it as rebalancing our budget a little bit more towards maintenance. Not to say we can't do any new things, and I'm going to talk about some new things I'd like to see, but just a smidge fewer of the new things relative to the last budget and a little bit more of repairing our sidewalks, maintaining our roads. And I, we don't have as good data on our sidewalks, but I went and looked at some of our data on our roads because we have our road assessment that's done every four years and looks at 1,545 road segments. Of those 1,545, there were 196, so 13% of them, that were at a two or lower out of 20. So, and then within this coming year, we've scheduled to get 15 of those 196 be repaved. So if we, if our roads never degraded anymore and we kept repaving them at the same pace, those twos and below, the same pace we're currently at, it would take us 13 years to repave all those twos. So when I have folks come to me and say, you know, this street of mine is in really bad shape, can we get it fixed up? And I say, yep, sure enough, it's a two, but it's not going to get fixed this year, it's not going to get fixed next year, it's not even going to get fixed the following year. It's going to take us 13 years to get through all of those. I think we can rebalance a little bit more towards that. And again, I would say I feel even more strongly about that for sidewalks. I just don't have quite as good data on it. In particular, I think a lot of folks have said good things about sidewalks. One thing that's specific to me is that I think it would be worthwhile to separate out our re-bricking from our general sidewalk improvements, capital improvements, because that re-bricking of sidewalks in particular is dramatically more expensive and is also in some of what I, maybe not everybody would agree, but what I see as some of our most important, most visible areas. Second thing is, I actually just retitled it because I like the way Alderman O'Neil put it better, is enhancing customer service, but that better experience with planning and zoning. But I'd also wrap what Alderman Savage and some others have said about council support into that because to me, if the council can have a little bit more support, even if that is somebody doing sort of that follow-up and it can allow us to have a little bit more time to be the face of city government to our members, I think, to our residents, I think that would be really beneficial to that customer service experience. I had somebody come to me the other day and say, hey, I know you're not the right person to complain to about this, but I don't know who to go to. And I said, I am the right person to complain to. But, you know, we need a little bit of support so we can be that first line for people who come to us. Then the last thing is making downtown feel a little bit safer and more welcoming. And that could encompass a lot of different things. I think there might be some things we can talk with our police department about to get some of their ideas. One thing that comes to my mind because it's just a really cost-effective investment is better lighting. And this is not needed everywhere. There are places where we have perfect lighting, but there are also alleyways that I would love to see, just make sure that those are actually lit at night. We had somebody last month get mugged in one of the alleyways between Main Street and Helmin Garage because there aren't lights in there, or at least the lights weren't working. So that's a really cost-effective investment to make us actually safer and feel safer. And as far as being more, oh, I'd also throw in that bollard idea. That's a really good one. And as far as making us more welcoming, I think it ties in with our economic development, but there are particular things we can do around some of the events that we have downtown. I know that year after year, our Christmas decorations have been getting cut back because the costs have gone up, but the funding has stayed flat. So that's the kind of thing that I think. So that's the kind of thing that I think we can do to welcome visitors, but also make sure we're being more welcoming even to our residents. A lot of that comes back to that maintenance point. So that's what I got. I think I actually stuck within three minutes. But I'd turn it over to the mayor, but yeah.
Did you have any questions for the council and you guys?
Yeah, that would be great. I think, I was imagining we just have kind of general discussion, and then hopefully in the last 10 minutes, kind of coalesce around some things we agree on.
I will ask Alderman Savage, if you could send me yours, I had a hard time hearing you on some of them, but if you could send me yours, I'd appreciate it. And if you all have extra support that you want to send to us, or to me rather, please do that. I think I'm gonna have some questions as I go through this, so I'll be reaching out for clarification, but I don't have any further questions at this time.
Alderman, go.
Thank you. I have a question for, I believe, the finance director. The opioid lawsuit money, can you give me an update on that?
I will be glad to send that to you. We have it, as we get in the receipts, we're putting it in a separate fund, and OEM is managing the programs using those funds.
Is that something that the council has voted on for them to do?
Yes, it's one of the smaller, you know, when you have your budget, you have the general fund, but there's a group of smaller funds, and the opioid fund is one of those.
Okay, I remember that we would fund four separate programs at OEM out of the general fund, so you're telling me now that...
So what we're putting, what we're doing is, that fund has the opioid restitution funds, and the amounts that the general fund is supporting those programs with is being sent to that fund, so that we're centralizing the opioid programs in that fund.
I would love some reporting on that.
So can you give us an idea of the number, kind of money that's coming?
I'll have to, yeah.
It's not huge, I know, but...
So I, there's $148,000 in the fund currently for FY25, with the understanding right there, currently they're settling, so we're every so often getting more funds in. We've got 148,000 baked in for, or programmed, sorry, for 25. 35,000 of that is the grant from Anarona County. If you look at your quarter one budget versus actual that I just sent, it does have a reporting for that, and then on the 31st, you will get the quarter two. So there's gonna be additional, you know, what they have spent out of that fund.
Was there a resolution or ordinance pass where the council gave explicit spending authority to the Office of Emergency Management? And if so, what?
You approved the budget, which had...
But does, so are we doing that every year?
Yes.
So, thank you. So my question being that, if you were to give me the exact figure on the 140, you said however much that's, it doesn't necessarily have to go to OEM.
So we wanted one central department to be monitoring and tracking how those monies are spent. I do believe more than one department is involved in the programs. And I don't know if the assistant city manager is nodding her head. I think that, you know, we have an OEM kind of managing the process, but other departments are helping run the programs.
It's going to the, just, it'd be, thank you very much, if you could send me the figures, that'd be great. Thank you.
Alderman Neal?
Thank you very much. This is not a question, it's actually just statements I believe that we all received yesterday from BG&E and our local regional BG&E contact. I sat in on the Zoom call that they had today, because BG&E bills are going up, starting pretty much now and going into the next four years. And the average bill, the report that was given today, the average bill is $23 a month increase. That increase, approximately $9 of it is coming from BG&E directly, the way that they bill their customers for different parts. And I know that I'm not using all the technical terms. They're supposed to be sending us the copy, and we'll definitely forward it on, the copy of the presentation that was given today. The rest of that 23 and some change dollars is coming from different regulatory parts. And one of the things that was really evident today in the conversation, and Alderman Schandlmeyer was also on the call, and he had a lot of really great questions, is that Maryland only produces about 45% of our electricity, and the rest of all is all outsourced from either Virginia or Pennsylvania. And that's actually decreasing, I'm sorry, it's 55% decreasing down to 45% of our energy. And there was a gentleman from the Baltimore County Council who was raging against that and demanding that the legislators start looking at how we produce electricity. But I just want to give that a heads up, as we start to look at our services and our sewer and water utilities, knowing that people on average will be getting about $23 more added to their monthly BG&E bills. It was a staggering number to me, when I was like, wow, that's the average.
Alderman Savage?
Just wondering, so this happened maybe six years ago, seven years ago, but I believe the mayor had some University of Maryland college students who did a free study for us, off, to see if I can find it, but they recommended to us that we, they put together a plan about how we could purchase, essentially purchase agricultural land somewhere on the shore that was zoned to allow installation of solar panels and solar energy and use that to basically get clean energy for city residents. I'd have to look that up. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
To look that up.
That would be great, just to talk about, if there's something we can get in the council.
That we can do as a council to push forward to our state legislators.
Little Sweden district heating, right? District cooling, yeah? But it is, isn't it, from what I'm reading, the decommissioning of the coal plants, and then the fact that we're gonna have to bring, we need capacity to bring power in from other states to have less regulations, and you're seeing the high-profile thing on those power lines that are being fought pretty hard. And that's, if that doesn't happen, that will add to the increase, add to costs as well, right?
Right.
Alderman Finlayson?
Have we ever received an accounting of our solar park and the impact that it has had on the grid? Are we receiving any, did we get the six partners that we needed for the solar park out off of Defense? Not to mention what's out here, but do we know whether we are reaping any benefits from?
I mean, we, I thought, my understanding was we're a third of it, or a quarter of it, or something, it's school system, county school system, and the county. So that deal was cut before we came in, right? I cut the ribbon, but it was already baked by that time. But I don't know, and there's a lot, a lot that we should look into on that. I don't really have any particular information myself.
I can tell you that we have a lease cost, we have a LACI there, and we receive regular monthly payments from the company that has the solar equipment paying us for the use of the property. Now, I wasn't here when the original deal was put together either, so I don't know the particulars of what you're, what you're talking about. We do get money in on a regular basis. It is a part of our revenue budget.
Does that money supplant our cost for energy consumption?
Somewhat.
For the city proper, not the city, but for government buildings?
That I'm not, I shouldn't comment on that, because I'm not the expert. I'd have to, we'd have to get somebody else in to talk to you about what that, what's that used for.
I was just wondering, we go into these relationships, and we understand that there's supposed to be a benefit, I want to say significant, but maybe not, and then we never hear anything. So I just wondered, I saw Alderman Savage had his hand up, you may have some.
Yeah, I'd like to dig into that arrangement. I'm interested, because...
That'd be great, thank you.
It's like, I was joking, sir, it's like something out of the wire. A Greek mayor did a deal with an Italian company, and then we didn't really see... All right, anything else?
If I could try to recap what I heard from folks, I think two things that came through very loud and clear as shared priorities were making sure that we have more repair of our sidewalks, better pedestrian infrastructure, whether that's Alderman Arnett talking about adding new ones, or making sure we don't have as many weeds or sidewalk, snow removal. Another one that I think we heard quite a few times was support for the council in one way or another. And then Alderman Gay summed it up pretty well, but I think in a couple different ways, we heard about making sure we're taking care of our most vulnerable, whether that's around the BGE increases, or making sure we're looking at our public housing communities. And then I think I heard in a couple different ways, but I'm maybe gonna try and lump all these together, some better strategizing around economic development. Does anybody have anything to say that those four did not, you did not hear consensus around those four, or that there's something else you would add to those four things? That you heard consensus on them?
Alderman, go.
Thank you. I agree with these four that you had, but I still want to stress this public safety issue and having maybe a consultant come in and do an assessment as to what we may be able to improve upon. I think that's critical. I think we just can't, I'm not saying we're ignoring what's going on in the rest of the country, but a lot of things that have happened in this country, I'm assuming, weren't anticipated. I guess what was very problematic for me, when you see the mayor of Los Angeles fighting publicly with the fire chief, and they're saying, it's your fault, it's your fault, we didn't have the money, I think that's very troubling to me. I don't want us to get into any kind of tiff like that. I at least want to have some sort of report to say what we're doing. I did see a gentleman who was being interviewed on television, who did one for them in New Orleans. It was pretty revealing. So that's my pitch.
Alderman Gay had his hand up next.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson, then Alderman Savage.
One of the more important things that was mentioned is Alderman Savage in saying that, obviously, they do a really good job at creating this budget. I love the open gov, online, interactive pieces, but there's a lot of stuff, for example, the staffing issue, we've proposed that probably three years in a row, and it's failed every single year. Last year, as he mentioned, by one vote. So if that's something that we all agree on, I don't know why it fails, so maybe that's a group amendment we put together. Secondly, the economic development, there's like three studies out for bid from the Economic Matters Committee right now, so that's something that we probably should discuss before everybody puts in their amendments, because there is currently already money being spent on those projects. And I think that's why, lastly, we need a, an update on amendments from last year. I don't know, like, if we get that before the 14th or whatever. I know I have at least three amendments, one of, where, that we've passed and have specified use and money, and it hasn't been spent, one of which, they now want to change the use of funds. And so I just, that would be incredibly helpful, so that we're not reduplicating ourselves and the amendments end up failing.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson?
Two things. First of all, the Office of Emergency Management oversees, I think it's 58 reports. And I have a feeling one or more of those reports may reveal some of the information you're looking for from a consultant. If we had the capacity, and I mean manpower and time, to bring all of those reports up to date, we may be better prepared, but that's a whole nother issue. My question is, Alderman Huntley, you heard all of our issues. I assume all of them are going to the mayor, and maybe at the next level, meaning the committee level, we can, you know, work through some others. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage next, then Alderman Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I'm certainly not saying that anybody disagrees with me on this, but I just want to clarify for the public standpoint, that I do, I think, and I agree with your summary, I think that's a really good summary that you've done. But I think it's important to note that, you know, we have, a lot of people didn't mention pedestrian safety, and I did want to mention this for our public safety chair.
Which is not...
It's okay.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm just emphasizing a point that I do think, we all mentioned pedestrian safety in some manner, and I do want to emphasize for the public that, in my mind, and I think, I think, I think everybody would probably agree, but I think pedestrian safety really is public safety. And I think it's important that we keep it framed that way, because I'd be willing to bet more people were injured in the city from sidewalk, poorly maintained sidewalks or car accidents than we have people who were injured by guns or assaults. And maybe even, in some years, more people killed by car accidents than guns in the city. Yet there often isn't enough urgency, I think, to address those pedestrians. I think we've done a pretty good job with that, but I think the public's mind, they don't always make that connection. So I'm glad to hear that we've agreed on some of that.
Thank you. Alderman Piddo Charles?
Yeah, I'm looking at public safety from a, I don't want to use this word catastrophic, I really don't, but that's what I'm looking at. Are we prepared, I guess is my, I mean, what Alderman Finlayson has said is about looking at those reports, and I definitely will dig deeper with Director Simmons. I've already talked to him about it. But I don't want us to fall into the trap of thinking that Director Simmons and his new team have all the answers, that whatever those reports are, we're gonna take a look at them, but if there needs to be a deeper dive, then we might have to get an outside consultant to do that. I did see a gentleman on, who was, like I said, interviewed, about what he had given New Orleans. And he did obviously a very comprehensive job, and this is what he does nationwide, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact. I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're putting this on the Office of Emergency Management. I guess that's my main concern. Yes, they have a lot to offer, no doubt about it, but there may be some other things, smaller things, that we could do that have been, I won't say overlooked, but that could be an enhancement. So that's my point. Thank you.
So, you know, I will say, my focus, or some of my focus will be to help planning and zoning. I think we, giving capacity, and Director Jakubiec has some great ideas how we can get involved in development, if we contribute some certain things to it, and then we can shape it the way we want to shape it. I think there's a lot of capacity on this council to design the sort of thing that we want in this city. So I would say that's, even with the new software upgrades and all the new things that we've done in planning and zoning, it's still been one of our challenges. So I will be working on some ideas on that. But I also want to be a cheerleader for our finance department. I mean, we, we're in the best financial position we've been in in our history, we have our best rating, our financial ratings. We're doing more capital projects than we've ever done in history. We're launching new initiatives, a lot of creative things coming out of this council. And we live in one of the best places in America, there's no question. Nowhere's perfect, right? Nowhere's perfect, but I know that we try every budget cycle to make this city just a little bit better. And this is a very important budget cycle for all of us, because the election's coming up, and many, and some of us are not gonna be here. And we want to say, we did something while we're here, and we left a mark, and we made the place that we live in and that we love better than the way we found it. And I think we have, I think you all have done that. And, you know, nobody knows your awards like you know them. And so, and I think, you know, you've served, they've got amazing representation in you all, so, you know, looking forward to this budget, and then looking forward to what happens in the future. But I want to say a big thank you to Jody. a big thank you to Jody, because we really have had amazing leadership in you, Jody, and so, thank you so much. And a great team. You know, you're going to leave the new director in a really good position, you know, and with, with what I believe will be more resources than you had, than you started with. And so, but you've got an amazing team, and you've been an amazing leader, and we're so grateful to you. Thank you. Sorry? So I just, for the first time, had a, met her online today, and so Vicky will be reaching out to you for, you know, the two-on-twos, or the one-on-ones, or whatever that you've done when we bring people in to... Well, Jody wouldn't think of leaving us until the budget's done. Unless you're really mean to her, don't you? Right, Jody?
Let's wait and see about that. See how the budget process goes. No, I've, I already said that even after the new director comes on board, I would need to transition the person on what we do. It's very complicated, and we do a lot of different types of programs. And it's kind of difficult to get your arms around it. And a volunteer to stay on and do some part-time special projects work, and likely would get me through a budget, but that's going to be up to the city manager and assistant city manager to decide how long I'd be here and for what purposes.
And remember, she's stepping into some shoes that are going to be managing a lot of complex things, the complexity of the city dock funding, the garage and all that, the different grants that have come to us, you know, record amounts of money that's come into the city that we've chased and been lucky enough to obtain. So that's, there's a lot of management that goes into that. So she's going to need all the help she can get. So that's, that's what I, I believe. But anyway, thank you so much for that, everybody. Thank you, Harry, for initiating that. And with that, I think, if there's nothing else for good order, let's go, meeting adjourned.